Good evening and welcome to the May 8th work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have one discussion topic. We're going to be getting updates from our delegations from District 17 and District 39. But before we get into all that, I want to invite the council to join me at the podium, and we're going to invite Delegate Kumar Barve to join us up there. Yeah, okay. So Kumar, come right over here.
Okay.
This is a bittersweet moment for the city of Gaithersburg. Kumar Barve has been an outstanding public servant, outstanding representative of our district for 32 years. And he has recently accepted an appointment to the Maryland Public Service Commission. So I just want to say to the outgoing dean of our D-17 delegation, his, I'll just note, his service has earned him esteemed positions within the Maryland General Assembly, being House Majority Leader, being Chairman of the Environment and Transportation Committee. And it is notable that Kumar Barve was the first Indian American elected to serve in a state legislature in the United States. So one day that will come up on Jeopardy, and everybody here better get that right. Kumar has been a tremendous leader on environmental issues, and I know it's a big passion of his. And he's also been a steadfast friend and supporter of the city of Gaithersburg, whether it's legislation, whether it's bond bills, whether it's killing bills, whether it's other projects. Kumar came through for us big time on the Watkins Mill interchange, which is, has been an enormous boon to our city. He's helped both the city of Gaithersburg and cities and towns across Maryland with the restoration of our highway user revenue, and has been designated, I think rightly so, as a municipal superstar on several occasions by Maryland Municipal League. So we have a, what I consider, what we all consider, a very well-earned token of our appreciation for Kumar tonight, and that is a certificate of appreciation from the Mayor and City Council of Kumar Barve, presented to Kumar Barve in honor and celebration of more than 32 years of outstanding dedicated public service as a Maryland legislator, sponsoring and shepherding through bills on behalf of the residents of District 17, actively participating in community events, and playing an important role in making Gaithersburg the greatest city in the world. We look forward to your continued partnership as you serve with the Maryland Public Service Commission. Best wishes for your continued happiness and success. Presented this 8th day of May 2023 and signed by me. Let's get a picture with you from center.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right, you want to say a couple more?
Yeah, I'd love to. You know, I, first place, first house I bought was in Gaithersburg on Pontiac Way, and I have enjoyed basically every moment that I've had to work with the city of Gaithersburg. The city has been, you know, it's, first of all, it's phenomenally well-managed, I think, and I think your staff is small but mighty. I think that some of the people who have worked for the city of Gaithersburg are people who were, at times, underappreciated. I think particularly of the late Fred Felton, who was my partner in crime on several, several strategic little forays that we would undertake in the General Assembly, especially by county bills. And I, my first mayor was Ed Boor, and he was a man who you knew he loved you if he tormented you constantly. And I could never get free of him. I was in a blockbuster, and I was looking at, I don't know, an R-rated film, nothing scandalous. And he says, "Well, I would expect better of our representatives than to pick up some smut like that." And of course, I thought, "That's gotta be Ed Boor." And then, of course, Sidney, who was the mayor of this city and went on to be the council mayor, council mayor in the Montgomery County Council, and of course, you, which I have to say, one of the things that I've most loved about the operating philosophy of Gaithersburg has been that a good idea is taken up. And I remember when you first got elected, I'm not speaking out of school when I say this, you and some other people ran against the slate. And so you were the new person, and you weren't the chosen person, but that very year, you came up with the idea of a book festival. And rather than say, "Well, you know, he beat our favorite candidate, we're just going to ignore this," they, well, you guys pulled it together, and you worked as a team, and you basically were focused more on what was good for the city of Gaithersburg and not so much the other unimportant, less important issues, personality issues. And now we have in Gaithersburg a book festival, which is one of the best on the East Coast, if not the best in the East Coast. And that's a tribute not just to you, Mr. Mayor, and to the council members, but really to the Gaithersburg way of getting things accomplished. And I will tell you that there were many occasions where I either had Ed Boor, or Sidney, or you, meeting with the speaker, and you have always put Gaithersburg, Gaithersburg's best foot forward. And it's been a pleasure and a joy to represent you. And I will say this, I actually got approval from the outgoing Chair of the Public Service Commission to say this, that if you have a problem with power generation or something like that, just call me up, the way you always would with other issues. I can't help you with all the other things that you may be concerned about, but when it comes to telecom or power, power regulation, distribution, if there's a problem and there's a solution to it, I'll find it for you. And I look forward to working with, continuing to work with you and the entire city of Gaithersburg and its residents, because you guys are worth it. And, and I will just say one other thing, Kirill Resnick is not here, but he was, he was also a big reason for why we got the Watkins Mill interchange, so I don't want to step on him too much here. But it's, it was happy to, I was happy to work.
Senator King.
Well, she's not, Senator King isn't, isn't leaving us, so. Yeah, boy, we'd be in big trouble. And of course, you know, all the District 39 and 17 folks, but I saw his name written there, and I don't think he's going to be able to make it. So I didn't want to hog up all the credit.
Well, thank you.
But thank you so much. This is, this is going to be one of those, as a final thing, I have to say that when you go from one office to another, you have to throw away most of your plaques. This one ain't getting thrown away.
Awesome. Can I just say that it's not that hard to imagine that with our partners, our working relationship with Pepco, that we will, we will have business before you.
Absolutely.
I'm sure we will sooner than later. So we're gonna, we're going to hear from our delegations, District 17, District 39, and if, if Kirill does make it, then we have, we have something for him, because he also retired from his seat to take a position in Governor Morris' administration. But if not, then we will give it to him another time. But let's, why don't we start with District 39, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the order to you guys, Senator King and Delegate Lopez. However you guys want to do this, you guys go ahead, and then we'll go to District 17.
Good evening, and let me just say what a thrill it is for me to finally have a small sliver of Gaithersburg to represent. We have worked together in one way or another for so many years, because what's good for Montgomery Village is good for Gaithersburg, vice versa. So we've really worked together, since I've moved to Montgomery Village a lot of years ago. So like I said, it's fun to, to actually represent you now. As many of you know, I'm the Senate Majority Leader in the, in the Senate. I serve on the Budget and Taxation Committee, and I'm Chair of the Education, Business, and Administration Subcommittee. So let me give you a quick, some of the points on the budget that we passed this year that might be of interest. We enacted a $61 billion budget that invests heavily in Maryland's values, including $14 billion in Medicaid funding to provide healthcare coverage to 1.5 million residents, $8.7 billion for Maryland Public Pre-K to 12 schools, an increase of 9.1%, in addition to another $900 million as a down payment on the blueprint for Maryland's future, that you know I've worked on for a lot of years, since it was an idea. $250 million to combat the climate crisis, including $160 million to support state parks and forests, $60 million for Chesapeake Bay restoration, $15 million for tree planting, $15 million for projects under the Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022, $200 million available for new mass transit and transportation infrastructure throughout the state to allow flexibility should Maryland be awarded competitive federal grants, $200 million for tax relief for Maryland's veterans and working families, $86 million in public safety and victim services enhancements, including an additional $46 million above the statutorily required amount to fund police aid, and to $40 million in increases to support domestic violence victims and rape crisis centers, and $2.85 billion in cash reserves, including $2.5 billion in the rainy day fund, and over $350 million in the general fund, with ongoing general fund revenues projected to exceed ongoing expenditures by over $150 million by FY 2024. The FY 2024 budget also includes an overall 8% increase to Montgomery County local aid over last year's budget, with state dollars going to primary and secondary education, libraries, community colleges, transportation, health formula grants, police, and fire and rescue. I'm happy to report that, working with the city of Gaithersburg, we were able to secure $250,000 to improve the lighting at Kelly Field here in the city. I sponsored 10 pieces of legislation that have been signed, or will be signed by the governor within this week. While all the bills will affect the city in one way or another, there are two that will directly affect the city. The first one is the home amenity rental tax, similar to Airbnb's. And this was one that, when they first approached me, and I thought, "Oh, this is a dumb idea," but it actually turned out to be pretty interesting. Homeowners can rent out their pools or other home amenities for a short period of time. This is becoming more and more popular with websites like Swimply. Senate Bill 691 authorizes counties to impose a home amenity rental tax. And just for an example, say you've got a swimming pool that, that's really nice, and you want to rent it out for an afternoon birthday party or something, you can rent it out, and, but you have to pay this tax on it, and that, in the city, come to the city. The bill also, also authorizes municipalities to impose by ordinance or resolution a home amenity rental tax not exceeding 1%. A municipality is prohibited from imposing a home amenity tax if the municipality is located in a county that does not impose a home amenity rental tax. And that bill takes effect July 1st. The second bill allows for counties and municipalities to remove restrictive covenants. While unconstitutional and thus unenforceable covenants that restrict the ownership of real property based on race, religious belief, or national origin persist in land records. Senate Bill 335, House Bill 182, authorizes a county or municipality to execute and record a restrictive covenant modification to an unlawfully restrictive covenant if the subject property is within the boundaries of the county or municipality, and at least 30 days before executing and recording the restrictive covenant modifications. The county or municipality provides written notice of the county's or municipality's intent to all persons with an ownership interest in the property. A person with an ownership interest in the property may decline to have the modification executed and recorded by notifying the county and municipality within 30 days after the date of required notice. Now, that all sounds good. My Patty wrote that. But what it does, Washington Grove has had this problem, and this was, this is a, this really addresses the, the problem there on so many of their deeds. There was some racism back in the day, and this, this bill allows that problem to be solved, in short. So again, I'm thrilled to represent the city of Gaithersburg. You know, in fact, several of you have called me already. Feel free to call me at any time, and I'm really looking forward to working with you, and I will see you at the book fair.
All right. So, so before you leave,
Yes.
I just want to say thank you for that update. Thank you for your service. Yes, this is the first time that you've come to speak to us in this capacity, representing a sliver of the city of Gaithersburg.
Two slivers.
A couple of slivers.
Small but mighty slivers.
Too small, but mighty, yes.
Yeah. But forget about the metaphor. You guys get the point. The point is, you have always been an ally. You've always been someone we could go to, reliable for as long as you've been in office. And it is much, much appreciated and not lost on us, as you know.
I know.
I want to, I want to thank you for your work on getting us the bond bill for Kelly Field. Thanks for including municipalities in the home amenity rental tax, and the, the authority to remove restrictive covenants. That's, that's a big deal. I'm not sure how, how many there are in the city of Gaithersburg, if any, but-
There aren't. There are quite a few in, in Washington Grove itself.
Okay. But either way, I think that's, that's beautiful work.
Thank you.
It's something that needs to be done. So anyone else have anything they'd like to say to Senator King? Go ahead, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If, if I was going to be traded anywhere from D-17, I was glad I ended up in District 39.
Well, thank you. That's good to know. Good to know. Thank you.
But to echo the mayor's comments, really appreciate all the work that you and the entire delegation has done on behalf of the city, particularly getting the lighting at Kelly Park, to which I can walk. And the mayor and I were able to, to cut the ribbon at the new turf field at Kelly Park a couple weeks ago, and it'll be wonderful to be able to get the lighting in there, and we'll be able to extend the, the daylight for the, the youth teams that are going to be using that field going forward.
Great. You know, I got a, I got a million dollars to, for South Valley Park over in the village. And that's been a park that has been an embarrassment since my kids played baseball there a lot of years ago. Other teams didn't want to come there because it was such a crummy field, and other places were so much better. So we were going to be moving that ahead. And then I got a call at the last minute saying, "If you had 250, if you needed $250,000, where would that be in your district?" So we got money to build a playground at South Valley Park, too. So Gaithersburg people use that park, too.
That's fantastic. As a former Little League coach, I can attest to the-
Yes, makes us competitive.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo everything that's been said. Senator, you know, we have a great working relationship with you and friendship with you, and appreciate all you've done. And I just wanted to take a moment to formally mention what was sort of mentioned in passing when we were presenting the proclamation to Delegate Barve, that you also had a very important role in the Watkins Mill interchange, and we thank you for that. We know it was a team effort-
Sure was, yes.
-from a handful of, of important leaders who have great relationships with the city, and want to make sure you all get the credit you deserve. The other thing I just wanted to sort of put out there on the radar, which will probably be something that we will continue to discuss over the next several months with the entire District 17 and District 39 delegation, is that some early discussions about what opportunities there might be as we proceed with the redevelopment of the Lake Forest Mall-
Yes.
...to provide community amenities that serve not only folks who are residents of the district, or residents of District 17 and the city of Gaithersburg, but also, as you say, just like folks in Gaithersburg use that playground that you just mentioned, certainly folks in Cider Mill and other areas of Montgomery Village and beyond need to be served by facilities in this area. And so there, there presents a good opportunity for us to all work together at the state, county, and local level-
Oh, absolutely.
...to see what we can do to provide something on that front, working together with the developer and community groups. And so I hope I'm not getting ahead of us, but-
I think it's going to be great.
We've had some opportunities to discuss it internally, and, and I think we're going to be coming to you all soon.
Good, good.
Neil Harris?
So just very briefly, I want to thank you for filling a vacancy on the Transportation Planning Board. We haven't had a member of the Senate actually filling that position, sitting on the board for quite some time. So thanks for stepping up and participating in some very interesting discussions.
Yes, I'm, I'm there when I need to be.
Thank you, Senator. Oh, Lisa, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Just, I just want to dittle the remarks and also say thank you. I've known of you as a powerhouse for many years, and, and it was, I will confess to being giddy when the sliver of Gaithersburg became District 39.
Good. Well, we will be getting our brains together and do great things.
Yes, absolutely.
Two last things that I want to say. One is Tom Lonergan is, he, there he is, is the best to work with. He'll answer the phone, God love him, even when he's out of town, wherever he is, he'll answer the phone. But, you know, as things move fast in Annapolis, sometimes I've got to have an answer, like really fast. I can call Tom any, anytime, and he's so accommodating. So that's really a plus for me. And I also want to say what a pleasure it is working with the District 17 delegation. I mean, we all have a good relationship together. Cheryl and I can put our brains together and, and get some good things down for Gaithersburg. So I, I think it's a win-win all the way around.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll invite Delegate Lopez.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here today, and good evening. For the record, I'm Delegate Leslie Lopez from District 39, and I am a partner to Senator King over in the House. And I think the last time I was here, I was very pregnant, and I was asked to discuss field dressing in AR-15. And so I don't have any parlor tricks today. I'm just here to talk about some substantive legislation. I can still talk about the gun stuff, but they're no longer my bills. I've moved on to Health and Government Operations, and I serve on the Public Health Subcommittee and Government Operations Subcommittee. And it hasn't been announced yet. I'm still in the process of making things official with my chair, but I'll be the new opioids, fentanyl, and addiction policy person on that Subcommittee. So if you have any ideas, or observations, or things that you can think about partnering on in that capacity, I'm all ears. This year, I was really excited to partner with you all as, as new parts of our, our district on the police accountability boards for municipalities. I was on the Subcommittee for Public Safety and Judiciary that worked on all the police accountability omnibus work in 2021. And we enabled counties to have police accountability boards, but we did not do, do that for municipalities, and that was a mistake. So unfortunately, the bill didn't pass this year, but I'm committed to seeing it through and working with MML, Maryland Municipal League, to make sure that that happens. One of the policy areas that I work on pretty extensively is student loan debt. And today, my third, could be technically my fourth, but my third student loan debt bill was signed by the governor. It creates a registry for everyone who's a servicer of student loan debt in the state. And the, the bar is that low. We don't even know who's servicing these loans and how much debt folks have. Now that we have a governor who is a Democrat, there's ways to introduce bills that might not pass, but you work with the administration to get them enacted. And so I had one about public service loan forgiveness that is, that's going to be taken up by the administration. So that's why I count it as the fourth, because it didn't, I don't get the pen and the whole ceremony, but it's, it's in effect, and that's, that's the important part. My, probably my favorite bill of this session was one that I partnered with Senator Kagan on, and I know she'll talk about it when it's her, when it's her opportunity to come up here. But just to give you the, the brief nuts and bolts about it, our state has the longest hospital wait times in the country. We are 50 out of 50. When someone in our state goes to the hospital, specifically the emergency room, they're going to wait an average of 228 minutes. We also, being Gaithersburg and Germantown and Montgomery County in general, we have so many folks here who are new Americans. They're immigrants who have various levels of, of status and the, the documentation and paperwork to support that. And so trying to put all these pieces together, Senator Kagan and I worked on a bill to allow people who do not have social security numbers, they can have I-10s or other document, government documents, to apply for healthcare occupational licensing. And we're already hearing really great feedback from folks, not only in our state, but in states across the country, about how this can be a model that can be implemented. So I'm very excited about that one. That one got signed into law last week, and we, we celebrated, but I'm still celebrating, because that was my favorite bill of the session. I worked with Senator King to get about one and a half million dollars for our district. And as someone who's not on appropriations, I'm excited when I get any money, but to have over a million dollars was, was pretty cool. One of them, one of the projects is for an AAPI center that's up in Clarksville, so outside of Gaithersburg. And the other is going to be a childcare facility that will serve folks in, in municipal Gaithersburg, as well as the unincorporated Gaithersburg. I also have the pleasure and, and pain, more frequently, of being the Chair of the Metro Washington Area Committee within the Montgomery County delegation. And Julie's here to talk more about that work. Metro Washington Area Committee oversees the Park and Planning Commission bills that you might have heard of this year. We, we, I think we maybe got like three or four of them total. Some of them we amended and moved on. But to address the larger issue, we developed a work group that came about as a letter of intent with the Park and Planning Commission, and then also the County Executive's Office, to commit to staff resources, and to make it a very neutral, apolitical process, where we could sit down with, you know, economists and people to do some real deep analytical work, and come up with a report at the end of this work group that we can, you know, use for suggested legislation at the state level and at the county, at the county level. So excited to see what comes of that, but we are in the process of finalizing, getting things started there. My other really favorite thing of this session was that I was the president of the Women's Caucus. And it was our goal and anniversary, our 50th year. We were off to a bit of a tumultuous start. And part of that was because several Republican women in the caucus decided to leave. And so we saw that as a rebuilding year and an opportunity to really think about the work that we were doing and the policy positions that we were going to take. And so I'm, I'm the first Montgomery County woman to chair the caucus since now Senator Arianna Kelly was in that role, I want to say 12 years ago. Might have been a little bit longer than that. But it's the first time since then that we've had a policy agenda. And every single bill moved in one chamber or another, in one format or another. And so I'm really proud of that work. We focused on criminal justice reform, getting funding for the pre-release center that's in Jessup. Some of you who are familiar with corrections might know that there's only one women's correctional facility in all of the state. That's, it's called Jessup, because it's in Jessup, so makes sense. But there's no substance abuse program there. And when you think about the reason why people often go to jail, it's usually substance-related. So there's lots of work there to be done. We also took a position on reproductive choice for the first time in 40 years. And that has to do with the Dobbs decision, and there was a, a package of bills, I think there was five in total that we agreed to, that essentially protect women and- five in total that we agreed to, that essentially protect women in our state with a constitutional amendment that sets a baseline for what reproductive rights look like, but also protects women from other states who might come here and folks who might be Marylanders but going to other states, protecting their data, protecting their privacy. We did a bunch of work around breast cancer. A bill that we supported will be enacted October first, the beginning of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and that will get rid of any type of co-pay for diagnostic screenings for breast cancer. We know that a lot of folks have to go in for like two screenings just to confirm everything with a mammogram and diagnostic imaging, and it becomes very, very expensive. And so, we'd rather make sure that people get the care that they need upfront. Senator King had some really great bills about the formula for childcare that we adopted and that was passed. She had another bill that was so great with Delegate Palakovich-Carr that the government, the governor took it into this Family Prosperity Act.
She was quite away from us.
Yeah, it was so good. He was like, mm, this is a great idea. I'm going to make it mine. And so, we are very excited to support it in its original format with our caucus members and also with the governor. The Women's Caucus also did a bunch of direct services, which isn't typically something that we do. I took, took over the helm of the Women's Caucus right as the baby formula shortage was starting to take hold. As someone with a three-year-old and a one-year-old, I have spent more time than I wanted to during that period, just crying in Target and Costco parking lots, trying to find formula. It was an exhausting period, I think, for everybody who had kids that age. And so, we partnered with two smart young people who are going to Montgomery College Germantown and University of Maryland College Park to create an app for baby formula tracking. And last time I looked at the analytics, we had about a hundred thousand people access that app to find crowdsourced formula and baby formula that was through inventory. We also partnered with House of Ruth Domestic Violence Centers to contribute about twelve-hundred pieces of women's clothing and baby clothing, children's clothing for domestic violence survivors. And then, we also asked a questionnaire of everyone that was running for statewide office, first time it's ever been done for the caucus. Other caucuses do it, but we figured we might as well up our game and get in there. We asked everyone running for statewide office if they would commit to gender parity in their appointments, and we heard back from everybody who is currently in office. And we developed a talent pipeline to make sure that qualified women would be in those appointment positions. And so, it's been a lot of work, but it was necessary work. It was a wonderfully rebuilding year. We've got two folks who are from Montgomery County who are going to be on the executive cabinet next year. That is Alinda Foley, and Pam Queen is our forever treasurer, whether she likes it or not. She's, she's going to be there forever, hopefully. And so, it's been just a really great year, lots of progress. Like I said, I'm new to my committee and new to this new assignment, but I'm digging in and learning as fast as I can.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your work. I want to particularly thank you on your support on police accountability boards, which was a top priority both for the city of Gaithersburg and for Maryland Municipal League. Yes, it didn't, it wasn't successful this year, but it's often the case is that it takes two or three sessions before things happen. But we really appreciate your support on that and, you know, your work on getting appropriations for the district and, and all this work on the Women's Caucus and these different, you know, unforeseen ways. I think they're, I think it's wonderful. Substance Abuse Program at Jessup, that's wonderful stuff.
Thank you.
So, anyone have any comments? If not, Ryan, go ahead.
Couple of quick ones, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Delegate, for all your good work. I think the occupational licenses bill is particularly interesting to us here in the city. I'm not sure it's been said yet tonight, but it should be said multiple times every night. We are the most diverse city in America. We have a huge immigrant population here. We try every way we can to make sure that we are a welcoming and supportive place and a place that provides opportunity for all folks who are here in Gaithersburg, however they got here. And so, I think this bill really provides good opportunities, of course, for everyone statewide who might be eligible, but in particular for a city like Gaithersburg. So, thank you for your work on that. And then, I think folks here know that a topic near and dear to my heart is financial empowerment. And I know over the last few years, you've worked on a number of different bills that have touched on that issue in different ways. I know a few years ago, you were a real advocate for the expansion of the Earned Income Tax Credit. And so, thank you for that work, and thank you for the bills that you've been working on this past session on debt reduction and other types of programs that are really part of the panoply of programs that make up a full comprehensive financial empowerment initiative, whether it's at the state or local level. And so, I think we need to keep pushing those because, as we've said many times, it's one thing to give a person a fish and feed them for a day. It's quite another to teach them how to fish or help them learn how to fish and pass on those opportunities to future generations and address the, you know, the generational wealth gaps that we see everywhere in our country and the systemic barriers to access and opportunity. And I think these kinds of initiatives are working towards that. So, appreciate your work on that.
Thank you. You might not believe me when I'm telling you that I gave you the Cliff's Notes version of all that, but I have one bill that has yet to be signed into law. I think it's coming up probably in the next couple of sessions. It's along the lines of financial empowerment. It allows an individual who's facing bankruptcy to keep their last five hundred dollars in their bank account automatically, because what we're seeing is people don't know that they can waive, and there's, you know, you don't have an attorney kind of advising you on things if you're at the lowest level of income. And so, we're seeing people just being totally decimated by their consumer debt, and it doesn't serve anyone in our community if we have an increase in people who are homeless or just at that level of poverty. So, I think you should keep your last five hundred dollars, and both chambers agreed, and so will the governor in a couple, couple weeks.
Great. And, you know, it's just been the celebration of the one-year anniversary of the new Financial Empowerment Center here in the city. I know that Senator Kagan was at the event a week or two ago, and a number of us here on the dais were. And anything we can do to continue to work with our state partners to support an effort like the Financial Empowerment Center and sort of plug it in together with the programs that you all are working on, on the legislative side, would be great.
Sure. That sounds lovely. And I, just in closing, I would be remiss if I didn't just acknowledge the fact that Kirill Resnick is leaving our team, and we're very excited to get Greg Wims on board. He's just a legend for all of his service in the Up Counties. We're very excited to have him. Because Kirill's not here, I can say some things that I wouldn't say to his face, which is that I really, really like him, and I'm very sad that he's leaving us because he's just a wealth of institutional knowledge, and he's someone who I go to for a lot of advice. So, if he's, if he's not feeling well and can't make it tonight, I'll just put it out there in the public record that I do appreciate Kirill, and I'm sad he's leaving.
We do as well. Thank you, Delegate.
All right, thank you.
So, Delegate Acevedro just walked in, and we're doing District Thirty-nine. You are, it would, if you have anything you'd like to report to us about the session, Delegate Acevedro, please come on up and, and tell us anything you'd like to tell us, and welcome.
Well, good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Welcome. It's good to see members of the City Council just here because, as you all know, we, redistricting that took place in the census, followed by the redistricting that took place a couple of years ago. We are now, District Thirty-nine encompasses the city of Gaithersburg. It's been an honor to work with you all over the years on a number of issues, and so, it's good to now be representing the city of Gaithersburg. Know quite a bit of you all. Good to see Councilmember Henderson, and certainly look forward to working with you all. As far as like legislative issues, a good bit. I'll just highlight a few because one in particular is important to me, particularly for our, our youth transitioning out of our foster care system, working on a bill to ensure that we have guaranteed income for those youths transitioning out of our foster care system from the time they turn eighteen to twenty-one. Outside of that, a good bit of issues, you know, certainly looking forward to working with you all and talking a little bit more, not just about the city's legislative priorities. We have a new member in District Thirty-nine, and I'm sure each of you all have reached out and, whether it's congratulated or introduced yourself. And we certainly look forward to working with you to ensure that Gaithersburg priorities are met in our state's capital. But thank you all for having me this evening and the opportunity to address the council and to let you all know what we've been up to. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. I, I do want to say, we, as I said at the end of Delegate Lopez's presentation, we feel very strongly about the service, a great gratitude for the service of Delegate Resnick, who can't, who can't be here. But we will honor him when we see him. And I think everybody, if not everybody, a number of us are very friendly with Greg Wims for a lot of years. He's a great guy, and we're excited to be working with him in the future. So, so, thank you. Now, as we go on to District Seventeen, I wanted to recognize in the, in the audience tonight, Ken Reichardt from Senator Ben Cardin's office, just to give a round of applause. And we have Susan Hoffman, former mayor of Rockville here as well. So, I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Senator Kagan.
We're on the opposite way.
Okay. Okay, first we have Delegate Joe Vogel. Welcome.
Sorry. Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Council. It's good to see you all. This is, this is how I want to spend my Monday nights every night. So, I'll touch on a few of the priorities that I worked on this legislative session. I think my colleagues over in District Thirty-nine did a, did a very good job highlighting what the legislature as a whole focused on. I will note that Senator King and I were able to sponsor that Swimply bill to, to what I call aligning the taxes of Airbnb rentals, short-term home rentals with short-term amenity rentals. It was a bit of a tougher fight, I think, on the House side, but we got it done despite some debate. The three pri, I came into the legislature with three priorities, to address the mental health crisis in our state, the opioid overdose epidemic, and the surge in hate crimes that we're seeing right now. I think those are three priorities for the people of Gaithersburg and really the people of Maryland. On the mental health front, we have, you know, I was in Gaithersburg High School not too long ago, meeting with the administrators there, having conversations about what they're seeing on a day-to-day basis within their building. And what I heard from them was, was so disturbing, right? They are doing everything they can to meet the crisis that they're seeing right now, but the reality is absolutely heartbreaking, what students are going through and what administrators are having to deal with. And there is, there just are not enough mental health professionals to address the mental health crisis that we're seeing right now in our schools. So, I focused on a bill, I sponsored a bill to address that shortage by focusing on the recruitment and retention of mental health professionals by targeting the issue of student debt. This really started, it was a conversation that I was having at the doors with a voter here in Gaithersburg that is a school, that is a psychologist, that had been a school psychologist, but told me that the reason that she had to leave school and go into private practice was because of that significant burden of student debt. So, the bill that I sponsored was to expand the Hoffman Loan Assistance Repayment Program, which is a program that school teachers and other professionals in the public service space can apply for here in Maryland and get up to thirty thousand dollars of student debt forgiveness. Unfortunately, up until, up until now, we were able to change this. School psychologists, school social workers, school counselors were not eligible for that program. So, what we did, the bill that I sponsored was to expand eligibility to include them. And over the process of, over, over the, a long legislative process over the course of session, that was actually incorporated into the Governor's Educator Shortage Act, which passed. And not, not only did it pass, but we increased the funding for the program from one point four million dollars to five million dollars. And we also, in the process, made it easier for classroom teachers to get that debt forgiveness, meaning that right now, if you are a school psychologist, a school social worker, or a school counselor who commits to working in a public school for at least two years, you can apply for debt forgiveness and get up to thirty thousand dollars of debt forgiven. That is a message to, to, to mental health professionals who are in our schools right now to continue working there and get that debt forgiven. But also, one thing that was really important for me in that bill was to make sure that when we, when we expand eligibility, it's not just for those professionals that went to school in Maryland, but you have to, you can go to school anywhere in the United States. So, that's, you know, our friends over in Virginia and West Virginia and Pennsylvania that have degrees in school social work or school psychology, come to Maryland, work in our public schools, and get your debt forgiven. I was having a conversation with a school psychologist not long ago. I actually saw him again earlier today. They live here in Gaithersburg. And, and, you know, they were, it is such a relief to hear that we are doing something about this shortage because not only is it a crisis for our students, but these professionals really are underwater with the work that they are having to do. The surge in hate crimes, we hear news of this every single day, and it's not just unique to our community, right? This really is a national issue with the proliferation of hate and antisemitism that we're seeing. But we're feeling the consequences of it right here in our own community. We saw the attack at a Gaithersburg supermarket where a man was harassed walking into the supermarket for being Jewish, and the people attacking him were saying, "Do it for Kanye," right? So, this is a, it is a, it is a trend that we are seeing across the country, and it is having an effect right here on our own community. And I felt really obligated to do something about it. And not just to do something, I think we've taken a piecemeal approach to the surge in hate crimes. I wanted to have a comprehensive action that would really result in meaningful, long-lasting change. So, I sponsored a bill to create a commission on state, on, a state commission on hate crime response and prevention, taking a task force that existed in the Attorney General's office, codifying it into law, and they were operating under a Department of Justice grant. So, this, this bill gives them the funding to retain their staff moving forward and not have to be up in the air as to whether or not they get a DOJ grant in the future. What we also did under the bill, two things. We added two more groups, or three more groups. One, a group representing the LGBTQ-plus community, which has also been targeted by hate crimes, a group representing the Asian-American community. Also, they've been disproportionately victims of hate crimes. And the Women Law, the Women's Law Center, they asked to be added as well because of the impact that hate crimes have on, on, on women and, and the intersection of those issues as well. And, and the, what I'm most excited about with that bill is that within a year and a half to two years, the commission has to produce a report both to the legislature and to state agencies, giving us direction with what we need to do to address the surge in hate crimes. And the reason I think this is so important is because we're hearing case after case after case of students and families in school who are, who are, who are vocalizing their concern about the rise in hate crimes and saying that, that schools just aren't doing enough to address it, or the school, the school system statewide isn't doing enough to address it. So, that, that, and, and giving the legislature direction with what commu, community, that the community is most impacted by the rise in hate crimes, what they think that needs to happen to address that surge. I just feel like, you know, we're, we're centering the voices that are most impacted as we come up with the solutions that we need to address the surge. Lastly, I want to talk about the fentanyl crisis. We are seeing, you know, we see over two thousand deaths from overdoses in our state every year. Hundreds of thousands of Americans have died from fentanyl overdoses and opioid overdoses generally in the last few years. I worked with a family here in Maryland that brought, brought this issue to my attention. Their son died from a fentanyl overdose earlier this fall, or last fall. And, and when, he was tested for drugs in his system, fentanyl did not appear on the test. And the family then started researching why this was the case, knowing that he at the time had been abusing fentanyl. And what they found is that hospitals, there was a report conducted by the University of Maryland that showed only five percent of suspected drug overdose patients in hospitals are tested for fentanyl. And of those tests, fifty percent, close to fifty percent come back positive. This same, the same story, this really started in California, where a family there, they lost their son because he went to the hospital showing every symptom of a drug overdose, was tested for, for what drugs were in his system, did not get tested for fentanyl, went back home, continued using the drugs that were laced with fentanyl, and died. So, California passed the Tyler Act to address this issue, to close the gap of fentanyl testing in hospitals. And here in Maryland, we passed the Josh Simms Act, which I sponsored to address just that issue, the lack of fentanyl testing in our hospitals. And on top of requiring that if you are, if a hospital is conducting a urine toxicology screening on a patient, they are now required to test for fentanyl as well. We also added on to that, that hospitals have to anonymously report that data through the State Health Exchange to give the Opioid Operational Command Center more visibility with accurate and timely data as to where we're seeing upticks in fentanyl overdoses in hospitals across the state. That's going to be so important. I worked really closely with now, former mayor, now Special Secretary for, for the opioid crisis, Emily Keller, and they're so excited that, that, that Opioid Operational Command Center is thrilled to finally have that data. And I'll just say one more thing, and then I'm, I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues here. I went to Shady Grove Hospital the other day to see how this is being implemented and what this looks like in practice. And I took a tour of their lab. And they're quick. They had already started implementing this policy and are now requiring fentanyl testing in all drug screenings. They have already seen an uptick in the number of positive fentanyl test results. And not only... And not only that, we, they, they moved really quick because that day that I visited was the first day that they were reporting, transmitting that data through the State Health Exchange to the state. So now, from Shady Grove Hospital, we will be able to see trends in fentanyl overdoses, and that is so important, because I, I had a conversation with a New York physician about just this issue. And she pointed out to me that the minute that they see one case, one fentanyl overdose, they know that there are dozens more coming, because so often, this is the result of laced drugs out in our community. So with that, I'll wrap up. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Delegate Vogel. Appreciate your work on all these matters. Any, any questions or comments? Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Delegate, thank you so much for advocating for these priorities in, in this last session and getting these bills passed. To me, it seems they exist at the crossroads or the convergence of sort of multiple overlapping crises, right? And you can't solve a crisis or make a big impact i- in a crisis unless you're addressing the multiple different root causes and symptoms of the crisis. And in terms of, you know, the, the bill for fentanyl testing, as well as the bill to provide loan forgiveness for mental health professionals, I mean, to, in my mind, they sort of go hand in hand. I mean, I'm sure we all saw a recent headline where a high school student was found unconscious at a fast food restaurant right here in Gaithersburg, and fortunately, through quick action, they were saved. But to me, that screams mental health crisis as well as drug crisis, and we don't know all the details, you know, but these kinds of stories are happening throughout the state, throughout the country, and we need to take bold action. And so thank you for focusing on those issues. And on the hate crimes front, I think it's important to say, we know that these are not anecdotes, right? These are, these are data-driven, you know, scary facts that we know about what's going on out in, in the greater community in many places around the country, through FBI data, through tracking from the Anti-Defamation League and other respectable organizations. And it's not enough for us to pass resolutions condemning hate, which of course we do. But again, here in the most diverse city in America, we need to be leaders and we need to work with our state partners in being leaders on the issue of practical, real-world consequences and responses to these threats to our communities. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Absolutely. And, and just on the first piece, right, this is, this fentanyl bill is one step in what needs to be a coordinated campaign to address the fentanyl overdose epidemic in our state. And we have to make sure that we are coordinating, right, with federal partners, with state partners, with, with local partners, to, to ensure that we have the, the education, prevention, and treatment resources that we need. I've had so many conversations about the impact that this crisis is having on young people in our state right now, and we just don't have the resources to help them. And that needs to change. This is, I think, the result of, of a very long time, a long period of under-investment in those resources and those treatment programs. And, and we have to, we have to speed up because the crisis isn't stopping unless we stop it.
Thank you. And then on the, on the loan repayment program, I hope you'll work with our Financial Empowerment Center to make sure that we can let people know as they come in for financial counseling that this is a program that's available to them if they are in the mental health profession.
Of course.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo what Councilmember Spiegel mentioned about the connection between our mental health crisis and the opioid epidemic. We had a speaker come in as part of our education efforts that are connected to the opioid settlement. And one of the big things that he focuses on, going back to his own personal experience, was the connection between what was going on in his head and his turning to opioids, and the importance of addressing what's driving our youth to seek out drugs as a way of coping and helping them to develop those coping skills. So, the work that you and the legislator did to, to make it easier to keep and attract school counselors, I think, is going to be vital. I mean, even in just trying to have the public schools address my son's ADHD accommodations and, and the backlog of, of just trying to get through the amount of people that are trying to get help through the counseling department, just demonstrates just that they're overtaxed. And we can't afford to lose any. So appreciate the efforts that are having there. And I want to thank you personally for, for coming to, right before the session and, and touring St. Martin's School across the street and, and seeing firsthand the impacts at the boost scholarships and the Title I funds that they get are, are playing here in, in Gaithersburg and, and the number of immigrant families that are there. And really appreciate the, your time and, and literally the week that you were starting your first week in the legislature. And just finally, the fact that fentanyl was not being tested all the time in, in hospitals, you would think it would be a no-brainer. But I think it's a good reminder that, you know, our laws and our, our regulations need to keep up with the times. And really appreciate the going, this is common sense, let's, let's get this done. So thank you for that.
Yes. And, and just on, on the first point, that restitution fund, right, that is so important. And I convened, not, not, this is not only an issue that's affecting the Latino community, but it's, it's, it's really having a devastating effect right now, the fentanyl overdose on our community here in Montgomery County. So I convened a group of leaders of the Latino community a few weeks ago with Special Secretary Emily Keller to discuss the availability of resources through the restitution fund to come to our communities and help us fund those education, treatment, and prevention programs that are, that are so desperately needed. And I will say that I've been back to St. Martin's since our time there, so.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Joe Vogel. I proudly get to walk through the halls of Gaithersburg High School because the people go, "She knows Joe Vogel." So, lots of thanks, and you and I have shared lots of thanks comes to you and the, and General Assembly and the legislators for the work that you, you did. It's, it's, it's a tremendous effort, or in a tremendous, it will be a tremendous outcome to have educated experts in our school system, because we're literally putting money in their pockets. And they can live successfully and, and less stressed to take care of our children. It, it is, it will, it is, is, and will continue to be a game changer. In terms of the data for the fentanyl, that's incredible. And to the point that Councilmember McNulty made, it's incredible that they weren't testing. I, I, I've had a situation recently where I know of four people who thought they were, and I'll use the term innocently, doing drugs. Two of them made it out, two of them did not, because those drugs were laced with fentanyl. And these aren't scientists that are measuring, right, of how much, you know, fentanyl is laced on top of drugs. So, so how important it is to get that data and to get to the root cause, because we hear of these, these circumstances, these horrible circumstances, but there's no data. We never see the big picture, right? We, we don't see the root causes of the ethnicities that are behind it, the neighborhoods that are behind it, the economic statuses that are behind it. We don't know that answer. So to get, get there is, is critical to solving these problems. So thank you for the legislators for, for doing that work.
Spoken as a true data professional.
Thank you, Joe.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Cheryl, who we got next?
Delegate Polakovic-Carr.
All right. Julie Polakovic-Carr, welcome.
It doesn't really matter. We're flexible. Good to see you all. Yeah, so for the record, Delegate Julie Polakovic-Carr, proud to be one of the delegates for District 17, most of Gaithersburg and all of Rockville. Great to be back here in person. It feels like forever ago, and also not that long ago since we were here in person. So nice to be back. So this session was my first in wearing a couple of new hats. I have been chairing the Montgomery County House delegation since last fall, and we had a very successful session as a delegation. Some of our top priorities this session were one-time and ongoing funding for Bus Rapid Transit for the county to continue their build-out of BRT, including here on 355. And we were successful on that front, and especially on making kind of a very technical but important change so that the county can basically bond money that we have secured for them on an ongoing basis. So that really is going to leverage hundreds of millions of dollars each year, and I think will make BR, the fruition of BRT on 355, you know, more likely to come sooner rather than later. Another priority for our delegation this session was the new Institute for Health Computing that is going to be built in North Bethesda, and really built out by the University of Maryland. That is another great partnership between the state. There's been some federal money from our congressional delegation, the state, the county. This really has been a great partnership, and we got seed funding at the state level this year to start designs for that new institute, which will really be a cutting-edge facility here in Montgomery County, doing research, using, like, basically unlocking big data to look at health issues. So an important issue, and will be some great new jobs here in the county. And I also just want to give a shout out to Delegate Lopez. She was our new Chair of the Metro Washington Area Committee this session and did a great job with a number of very thorny issues around the county's planning board. It made me very grateful to represent District 17 with both of our municipalities having your own zoning authority. I kind of felt like we weren't, you know, a little above the fray on some of these issues since the county doesn't have zoning authority in most of our district. My other new hat this session was as Chair of the Early Childhood Subcommittee on the House Ways and Means Committee, was very pleased to be picked by the Speaker to serve in that role. We have jurisdiction over childcare, but also libraries and some other K to 12 education issues. So really an interesting new role there. I thought I would actually just highlight a couple of the big bills from this session. I think you all have been very engaged and informed of what happened, but for the listening public, there were a couple of bills that may be of interest to people. So starting with the Governor's Family Prosperity Act, which was mentioned briefly here tonight. But just so folks know, what we have done, and it's now law, is made permanent some changes and expansions really to two really key tax credits that help low and middle-income working families in our state, the Earned Income Tax Credit and the Maryland Child Tax Credit. So starting with the Earned Income Tax Credit, a couple of years ago, we enhanced that credit, made it worth more money, but also importantly, expanded who was eligible for it, so that our immigrant taxpayers as well as mixed-status families could qualify for that credit. So that is now permanent in law, and it had sunset after two years, but that will be the law of the land here in Maryland going forward. So I'll say, for anyone who's listening, you know, if you are making up to into the $60,000 range, depending on the size of your household, you may qualify for the Earned Income Tax Credit. That is a federal credit, a state credit, and Montgomery County matches it. So we're talking about thousands of dollars potentially, depending on your household situation. The other part of that bill, the Maryland Child Tax Credit, is an issue that Senator King and I have worked on for four years and got a little bit of it passed a couple years ago, but the governor really was, it's great to partner with him and his administration. They were very excited about this when I approached them last fall, not long after the general election, to make this a, really a central point of their efforts to end childhood poverty. So now the, the Maryland Child Tax Credit is for families making up to $15,000 a year, and they can receive $500 per child who is young, under the age of six, or for any child who has a disability. So another great credit for folks to look into. The other, another big issue from this session is paid family leave. You all might recall from last session, this was an issue where we actually passed legislation on, but this year we actually finished the work, figured out a lot of the technical details. I don't think any of the members of our collective delegation serve on the committees that dealt with that legislation. But starting January 1, 2026, all Marylanders will be able to get paid family leave up to 12 weeks, so whether they have a new child, they need to care for a child, a spouse, an aging parent, et cetera, and get paid time off from work up to 100% of their average weekly wages. So people will start to hear more about this from their employers going forward. It's off, you know, a few years in the making because we have to build up the insurance fund reserve, but starting in the fall of 2024, people will start seeing, both them and their employers will start paying into this fund. So that's going to be another great new benefit for Marylanders. In terms of my own legislation, I had five bills that passed this session, three have been signed into law already, ranging from everything from, you know, kids who have very severe food allergies and having better accommodations and protections in public schools for them, updating our state's laws on cryptocurrency, because that's a thing, but our laws haven't really reflected that, so strengthening our campaign finance laws and tax policies, tax laws, and also making some reforms in terms of unemployment to, to make our system friendlier when an out-of-work Marylander has been, you know, accidentally gotten an overpayment from the Department of Labor, not because of their fault, trying to, to make that a little bit friendlier for folks going forward. But I actually just want to lastly just highlight one of my bills that didn't pass this year, but I appreciated the city's partnership on, and that has to do with very loud vehicles, vehicles that have illegally modified exhaust systems. Appreciated that the city weighed in in support of that bill. We know that's been a big quality of life issue for, for many people. I've heard from too many constituents to count over the, really since the pandemic, both in Gaithersburg and Rockville on this issue. So we had a bill this session that would have allowed for automated enforcement, like a speed camera, but for noise, detect these vehicles that are operating at, you know, just excessively loud volumes and, and breaking Maryland law. So we did get a kind of a, a modified version of that passed through the Senate, didn't get it through on the House side, but plan to come back next year to keep working on that, because we know it's been such a quality of life issue for, for many neighborhoods in the district. So with that, happy to take questions.
Thank you so much. And on that, you're working on a lot of great stuff, but on that last point, I'm sure we're, we're going to be with you again when you reintroduce that next year.
Thank you.
Neil?
So, first of all, my son is 16. Is the Paid Family Leave Act retroactively available? No, but seriously, on the Earned Income Tax Credit, I've seen the data, and that is a huge, huge funding source to, and to reduce child poverty and really helps families a lot. I mean, it's, I know I've heard some criticism from some people that are just knee-jerk reacting about giving money away, but that money gets spent on good things, on food and things that are really important for kids. So thanks for the good work on that.
Yeah, yeah. I still feel like the legislation we passed two years ago remains my kind of proudest moment in five sessions in, in the legislature in terms of making that credit more inclusive.
All right. Well, thank you.
Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Delegate. We've had a number of discussions about the minutia of tax policy over the years, and I just really appreciate your diving into it and really being an expert in it, and, and the go-to person to talk about a lot of this stuff with and to advocate on behalf of our city and our district. And, you know, I don't want to belabor the point, I'll just sort of incorporate by reference what I said earlier, and I'll incorporate by reference the comments of Councilmember Harris with respect to the Earned Income Tax Credit, and what an important piece that is, not only of what you all do at the state level in terms of policy for economic justice, but what we are trying to do in implementing and helping it along here at the local level with our financial empowerment programs. And I just quickly wanted to share some data that we just received a few days ago, I think, from our, or maybe a week ago, from our Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program that is run here in Gaithersburg every tax season. This year, this tax season, we processed 398 federal tax returns and 412 state returns for income-eligible residents, for a total of $468,901 in federal refunds and $245,132 in state refunds for folks who are income-eligible and who would otherwise not be getting that money back to themselves, their families, and having it put back into the local economy as well. So that's the real practical, you know, implication and consequence of this important work that you're doing. So thank you. I had a couple other questions about some other legislation, some of which you mentioned and some which you didn't, so I apologize for putting you on the spot. On the crypto, on a lighter note, I don't know if you can tell us whether or not municipal elections are covered by that, such that, such that candidates for municipal office cannot accept contributions in the form of cryptocurrency?
So my, I'd have to double-check the law. In the, I believe it only applies, though, to the state elections since municipalities, you know, your elections are under your own jurisdiction. So that might be something to look at. I'll say.
I'm going to ask Senator Kagan, because Senator Kagan's our, our elections expert.
She's confirming what I said was correct. Yeah. I, I will say that if you want to look in that direction, in the end, we amended the bill so that it, it applies, it was broader than just crypto. Originally, I came in with just a ban on crypto. And in the end, what we did was say that it just, you can only use US currency, whether to accept money or to spend money, it only US currencies. I think that was a much broader policy. Our committee analyst had, had suggested that idea, and I was very supportive. So that might be something to look at in terms of your own election code.
Okay. And then in your role, chairing the Early Childhood Group, I don't know how much you've all gotten into this, but just something of interest to me and something we've discussed over the years on the City Council are, of course, the capacity issues and the sort of need, the demand for more childcare capacity in our communities. I don't know if you've all talked about that, or if there's any policy discussion in the works on, on ways to address that at the state level.
Yeah, it's definitely a big issue, even in places like Montgomery County, where there is a lot of providers, that we still have childcare deserts here in our county. It is worse in other parts of the state. This is part of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, which was the landmark education law that we passed a few years ago. And in fact, we did pass some legislation related to the sliver of this that has to do with publicly funded full-day pre-K, which is do with publicly funded full day pre-K, which is slowly starting to get implemented now. Really will start to have more bandwidth in that program in the coming years. But right, I mean, it's like an all of the above approach, like the publicly funded is not, is not designed to serve the needs of everyone. It is for a certain population of students who really need this extra assistance, low income families, children whose families don't speak English at home, et cetera. But right, we need more private providers and that still continues to be a struggle because the pay is not there, but at the same time, it's exorbitant for the families who are participating in it. So I appreciate you flagging it. Let's talk offline in terms of some other things that have been in the works.
Sure. Part of the reason I bring it up is just from a municipal perspective, we have some discussions about the land use issues around making sure that we can provide that capacity. And so I think there's some overlap between that and some of the other funding and other support issues with that issue. And then finally, if I may, Mr. Mayor, this is a bill that you co-sponsored, but really Delegate Stewart was the lead sponsor. So if this is not your bailiwick, I'll wait to talk to him about it. But this was the Housing and Community Development Funding for Adaptive Reuse of Existing Buildings. And, you know, if it wasn't something you are deeply involved in, that's fine, I'll withdraw the question. But as I understand it, this bill, which was signed by the governor, allows the use of additional state funding for the adaptive reuse of existing buildings for affordable multifamily housing. And again, from a land use perspective and a zoning and planning perspective, it's of interest to us.
Yeah, my understanding was that with that legislation, they were just really trying to tidy up what was in state law. Those program, those types of reuses weren't precluded, but they weren't also expressly spelled out. So just trying to make clear that programs like that, projects like that could compete in those existing funding streams. But I think Delegate Barby, since that bill went through his committee, might be able to elaborate more.
Great, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good segue. Yeah.
Yeah, I, again, honored for me to be here with you all. And as Chairman of a committee, I only introduced one bill and it didn't pass. Unfortunately, it was a cross file with my Senator. But, you know, my philosophy has always been farm out legislation to the members of my committee. And as a result, we had some very good work that was done. I will say that typically in my committee, because so much is based on chemistry and science and very, very involved technical issues like that, we tend to build up as the four years go by. And the first year tends to be one where we don't do a lot of big things, but we did some very important stuff. And let me begin with the Forest Restoration Act. This is a law that had been proposed a number of years in a row. For those of you who don't know, we have had a forest conservation law on the books in the state of Maryland for a great length of time. And what we've done in this, what we've done in this law is we've really established the principle of no net loss and hopefully a slight gain in forest cover in the state of Maryland. We have, we work very closely with the business community and a lot of issues that were of concern to them. We work very closely with solar power generation community as well, because we're not going to be able to, we can only do this if we balance land use off properly. And as a result of this, we expect to be able to get up to the pre-stated Maryland goal of 40% forest cover in our state. A lot of people don't know this, but actually the forest cover in the state of Maryland was almost, it was almost wiped out at the end of the 19th century because of farming use of all the land. And ironically enough, the responsible use of fertilizers and pesticides have allowed farms to use less and less and less acreage. And that's allowed more and more of the state of Maryland to be restored to forest. So it's, it's a part of the balance in public policy that makes my committee so fascinating because there are really very few cut and dried, obvious, no brainer answers. It's almost always a balancing act in our state. Another law that we passed with the support of the administration was the Clean Truck Rule. And essentially what it does is it has the state of Maryland join, I believe, seven or eight other states of the Union in requiring an increasing percentage of sale for basically delivery vans, Class 8 trucks that have to be non fossil fuel using. Now, to be clear, this is not a mandate on Maryland businesses. It's a mandate on the manufacturers to provide those products and hopefully to be able to sell them. Just so that everybody's clear, the state of Maryland actually has Volvo Trucks, Mack Truck in Western Maryland, which is a major electric truck manufacturing facility. We worked with them and they supported the bill as we wrote it. And so, you know, typically whenever you're making a mandate of this kind and you have a major industrial player, sometimes you have to actually bite the bullet and say, yeah, you're, you're going to have to take a haircut on this. But in this instance, as we often do in my committee, we tried to work it out so that the basic business interests in the state of Maryland were, their needs were accommodated. And especially in Western Maryland where there's a real dearth of high quality employment, we didn't want to do anything to disrupt them. And ironically, it's not just that, but it's a labor represented factory out there in Western Maryland. So we were able to work with business, labor, and the environmental community to get this done in a way that makes sense for the state of Maryland. We worked with the Moore Administration to enhance electrification, to enhance the infrastructure for vehicle charging in our state. And it's, you know, it's going to be an ongoing activity. Of course, the leader in all this is Tesla. In fact, I was at a ribbon cutting of a Tesla superpower, a supercharging facility at the Royal Farms in Watkins Mill. And so we're going to be seeing more and more of that, but the government is going to become more involved in providing economic incentives. And another law that we passed, which was very scaled back from what I would have wanted, but it was a bill that basically requires that new single family homes be built in a way that creates opportunities for vehicle electrification if they have a carport, a garage, or some opportunity to plug in. And so the one, the language that I was really hoping for was one that was a little more, a little more beneficial to people who live in apartment buildings, but, you know, it'll have to be the next chairman's concern. So let me talk about a few issues that didn't quite make it. I expect that they will make it. As you know, in my committee, we don't just deal with the environment and transportation, but we also deal with housing. And the state of Maryland and the United States of America generally are in the midst of a housing crisis that's caused by a dearth of housing. We just don't have enough, we don't have enough housing for pretty much every category of homeowner or home, every category of person except for the upper middle class and the wealthier. And so we, you know, it's always a struggle between tenant advocates and land and property owner advocates on so many of these bills, but we were able to pass a law that didn't move in the Senate. It was, it ran out of time in the Judicial Proceedings Committee, but it's an interesting concept. Delegate Vaughn Stewart, who's a Subcommittee Chair in my committee, introduced a bill that would allow tenants to pool their resources in, in trying to access the rent escrow law. And what that means, right now, under the laws in the state of Maryland, if you rent a property and let's say you have mold and landlord isn't doing anything to fix the problem, you can go to court and give your rent check to the judge and say, put that in escrow until the landlord fixes the mold problem. A lot of people don't access, a lot of people just don't have the ability to take off work, go to court. It's, it's a problem and it's an underused feature of the law. This bill would have basically said that a group of people, say 10 or 15, more than one person could go into court, be represented by one vendor who would say the eight of us have a mold problem. Here is our, here are our rent checks, put it into escrow and let's get the landlord to fix this problem. It's, it's a bill that is almost surgically targeted at slum lords. The vast majority of property owners are very responsible. As you know, my wife and I lease an apartment in Rockville Town Center now, and for the most part, pretty responsible property owner. This wouldn't be a problem for them. It's for the people who are really negligent in the quality of, quality of life of their rental properties. Another bill that failed now for the fourth year in a row, ran out of time in the Senate, was the Paint Stewardship Act, which is an unusual law.
No, no, no. Okay. Go.
Okay. Okay, she'll correct me. The bill passed, the bill's passed out of the House four years in a row and it's a unique concept. The industry, the paint industry actually approached us and said, listen, we'd like to set up a system where we take, we charge a slight fee to customers, we take back the, you know, you know, you never use all of your paint and they take it all back and they recycle it in effect. And that way, it doesn't have to go through the municipal recycling facilities. It's not a cost burden for the taxpayers of Montgomery County or any of the other jurisdictions. Ran out of time and, you know, I'm sure it'll be fine next year. And then finally, as a subset, recycling has been failing in the United States of America for many, many years. And there was an attempt to rewrite and to really relook at the Maryland Recycling Act. It's, it's very complex. We weren't able to do it this year. I expect that my committee is going to go into interim study and to look at ways to address so many of these issues. It's very complex, obviously. And, but, you know, it's a law that needs to be upgraded after several decades. And finally, I do want to, you know, address housing generally. The adaptive reuse law was one that's very important and it's really a first step. What we're seeing is an opportunity, a potential opportunity to take a lot of commercial buildings that are increasingly not filled out because of telework and changes in the workplace. It's an opportunity that we have to treat, see if we can create more residential housing with. It's, but, you know, the problem, the meta issue that's going to be a problem for my committee, for this state and the United States, is that we have become a, well, we become a nation really, where local community activists can very, very easily stop apartment construction, low income housing construction. It happens everywhere in Montgomery County, less so in Gaithersburg because Gaithersburg has had a history, starting with Mayor Boar, of really working hard to encourage, encourage housing for a lot of the working class folks who live in our community. And I remember when, you know, we were doing so much, not we, I had nothing to do with it. It was a city of Gaithersburg was really allowing the, tearing down of some structures. Ed Boar was very insistent that we actually, he said we, the city of Gaithersburg, find homes for these folks so that they wouldn't be displaced. And I think that there's probably a lot that the Montgomery County and the state of Maryland can learn from Gaithersburg and all of this. And, you know, it's just a shame I'm not going to be a part of that, but, you know, I'll try and keep the electric power rates low. So I'll contribute that way. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Fair enough. Thank you so much, Kumar. Again, thank you for, thank you for your work this session and for the previous 32 or 31.
Yeah, 32.
Yeah. I see some people raring to go here. I'm going to go with Neil first.
So I just want to point out one thing based on something that you said at the beginning of your talk, which is that the state of Maryland is aiming at 40% tree canopy coverage. The last time we had a report here in Gaithersburg, we're at 39%, which is pretty good for a pretty built out. Well, with Lake Forest, I'm sure we'll get there because we're going to greatly increase the tree canopy with that new development.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, great. I mean, there, there are a lot of places that can learn from Gaithersburg.
Spread the word.
Yep.
We need someone to quote that. It's been said a couple times tonight. I want that to resonate. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to offer thanks and congratulations again, Delegate, Mr. Chairman. It's been a pleasure and honor to work with you for a lot of years. On the climate action, the bold climate action legislation that you got passed over the last several years, I just want to salute you on that and really appreciate your environmental leadership. Wanted to just make a couple of observations about electric vehicle charging infrastructure. First, you made a comment about trying to make sure that new residential construction contains sort of the, the internal build out to be able to put high speed chargers in garages and things like that.
Have you guys done this already?
And we have already done that in our building code here in Gaithersburg.
Of course.
So just wanted to point that out and I think we're very much on the same page about that. We have a couple of new EV chargers in the City Hall parking lot and a couple of our other municipal facilities as well. So encourage folks to take a look at those and use them if you're able to. And that includes for Delegate Palakovich Carr, who I know is interested in the issue of on-street charging.
Right.
That on Rabbit Road in front of our Public Works Facility, we have two on-street chargers where you can parallel park on the side of the road and charge. And Councilmember Wu posted a picture, I think, a couple of days ago of two vehicles using both of the chargers. So those are up and running and obviously on, in demand and we're excited about that. So more to come on that.
That's fantastic. I, you know, I'm ashamed to say I didn't know that that was the law here and, okay.
Just another way that the county and state can take Gaithersburg's lead, right?
That's right.
Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to publicly say thank you and congratulations and we will take you up on the power offer.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
But thank you. Thank you for all, all your years of service.
Well, thank you. It's been a pleasure. I mean, honestly, I enjoyed every moment of it. Nobody had to hold a gun to my head to represent Gaithersburg.
Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to add my congratulations, Chairman Barby. It has been a pleasure to get to know you over the past few years and to work with you. Appreciate your work on helping with the adaptive reuse. We're currently looking at that in the city as well. I know our economic development team, Sharon Disk and Tom Long and Seager have been looking at, you know, with vacancies in Class B, office space, and how do we, you know, look at converting that, whether it's lab space or housing or whatever. So that's going to be important as, you know, post COVID, what, what does the future of work look like and the future of housing? So appreciate that. And, you know, and whatever influence you'll have at the Public Utilities Commission, as we start looking at the, the needs for infrastructure, particularly with adding electrification on the curbside and even just thinking about Lake Forest and, you know, what can we incorporate into new developments and how do we look at retrofitting old, older neighborhoods and making that something that's regularly accessible, particularly as you mentioned, apartment buildings. So I think that's going to be important going in the future.
Yeah, you know, and let me just say this, the mathematics and the economics of renewable energy is, it's often counterintuitive. I mean, obviously, solar in fields is going to be way cheaper than everything else. It's cheaper than natural gas, the electricity that's produced that way. But obviously, that brings a lot of conflict. And so again, it's an instance where we have to balance off the conflicting needs of the public. And most of that conflict resolution is going to take place in the legislature, but also a little bit of it will take place in the Public Service Commission because the Public Service Commission has purview over large generators of electricity. If you want to build a nuclear plant, a coal plant, or a gigantic field of solar power or offshore wind, those are decisions which to a very great extent are regulated, regulated decisions that are made at that level. And so I will, you know, I, all I can say is that I understand the legislative intent of electrification and that's going to be really the, that's going to be the mantra that we're going to follow because that is the public policy decision the legislature has made over the last several years to move in the direction of greater electrification.
Thank you, Kumar. Appreciate it. As we bring up Senator Kagan, I just want to note to people in the public, and if there's anybody watching on Zoom, we will open it up if there's any testimony or questions or comments after the Senator speaks.
Perfect. I would say best for last, except there's no way I can do that because there is so much talent in these two delegations and it is a real joy to work with my friends and colleagues in these districts. For the record, Cheryl Kagan, very proud to be the Senator for Gaithersburg and Rockville. I would say I'll be brief, but I'm afraid I won't be. I won't be, because I've got, I had my list, and then I kept adding things as everyone else went on. Uh, if anyone watching did not get this letter in the mail, it is long. It's excellent bedtime reading that will help you fall asleep, but it's everything you want to know in eight pages as to what we did. Uh, if you didn't get that and want to call my office, we can put one in the mail to you. Or if you'd like to get it by email, we also sent it broadly there, and you can sign up on my website, cherylkegan.org, and we can either forward that to you, or you can just get future emails. I'm also very easily available on social media, uh, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and my Kibitzing with Kagan podcast on YouTube and Apple. Um, there's so much to cover, and I'm going to start with the Governor and Lieutenant Governor. Uh, some of you may remember that I was the first legislator outside of Baltimore City to endorse West Moore in a ten-way race when he was at one percent in the polls. And now he's our governor, and he's doing an extraordinary job. Uh, there was reference to equity, and fifty percent of his cabinet is female. It, his cabinet looks like Maryland. It is ethnically and linguistically and professionally, as well as geographically diverse, and they are some of the most talented leaders I have ever had the privilege of, uh, of knowing and working with. And actually, one of the things I'm starting now is my kibitzes, uh, my podcasts, my brief chats that I do through Zoom. Um, I am now doing Cabinet Secretaries, and the next one is going up tomorrow, actually. I just did the Secretary of the Department of Natural Resources. The next up is Planning, and I've got three or four more scheduled and, and more to come. Uh, collaboration, cooperation, and communication is not something that I've experienced in the eight years of the Hogan administration, and it is a new day with the Moore-Miller administration. They had ten priorities, all ten passed. That's an extraordinary, uh, batting average in anyone's book, and they are all significant. These are not small, little, um, symbolic measures. These were significant, uh, policy measures that moved the ball. Uh, as you all know, but maybe folks watching from home don't know, uh, my committee has changed its jurisdiction, and rather than Education, Health, and Environmental Affairs, it is now the Committee on Education, Energy, and the Environment. And I always say "and elections," because we still have elections, and just because it's not one of the E's in, uh, in three E or triple E or E cubed, we're all still figuring that out. I call it E-quad, because we do election law, and I will tell you more about that. But we have a new chair, we have new members, and we have new jurisdiction, and, uh, it's very exciting. So I will get to continue to work with, uh, Delegate Kumar Barve in his new role at the Public Service Commission, uh, as we work on green energy and other issues. Uh, but, uh, Senator Brian Feldman from the district right next door is the Chair of my new committee, and he just did an extraordinary job, and we just have a lot of talent and got an extraordinary amount of, uh, of important policy done. Um, capital projects and the state budget, Senator King talked about that. Uh, but in addition to Kelly Park, we're talking about downtown Crown and many nonprofits that got funding this year. And again, you all, you all, uh, are familiar with that, but it's important that we don't just send our money to Annapolis, but that we bring some of our tax money back, and that helps Gaithersburg keeps its, keep its budget in line. Um, Delegate Lopez was a joy to work with on our healthcare licensure, and so I'm just going to start with that, uh, because, as she said, we are ranked fiftieth. The wait times in our emergency rooms are insane and, uh, and dangerous. And so we have talented people, and the way I talk about it, just to amplify without repeating what she said, we educate people, our dreamers and folks, uh, we educate them K through twelve in our public schools. We give them in-state tuition at our Maryland colleges and universities. We give them senatorial and, and delegate scholarships, and then when they're ready to start their career, we slam the door in their face. We want these folks, these talented people who have the qualifications, we want them to work in Maryland. Fourteen other states have passed similar legislation. Maryland, now that Governor Moore has signed the, the law, uh, we are going to be able to welcome them and include them to stay right here and provide service to our people who need healthcare. Um, election laws. Uh, so I do a lot of work on election laws, and the bill that Governor Hogan vetoed last year, quite unexpectedly and frankly quite unwisely, that caused such enormous delays in certifying our primary election results. It took over a month to get the final results, uh, certified. And I think most voters are used to being able to turn on the TV, uh, on election night and find out if their candidate or their party was successful or not. And, uh, that did not happen. Now, Maryland is the only state in the country that forbids the processing of mail-in votes until after Election Day. That's nuts. Now, when it was three or four percent, that's fine. It's probably not going to make a difference, except in close races like our county executive race here between David Blair and Mark Elrich. But now that we're talking about, now that we've experienced and virtually all mail-in ballot election, uh, or increased numbers, uh, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five percent mail-in ballots, it is completely irresponsible to wait until two days after Election Day to start processing them. So despite the veto, we brought it back. Frankly, I strengthened the bill, and, uh, every county will be required, unless they get a special waiver, and that'll only go to tiny little counties with, with low population. Uh, but it will be required that they start processing mail-in ballots at least, or, or eight days before the start of early voting. So that means on election night, we're going to have a lot more data that will be able to be shared. We have, uh, um, an elect, a state election administrator who's been with us for twenty-six years or so. Uh, I sponsored a bill repealing, uh, a really bad idea that was added to our law books in two thousand and five that made that position completely immune. And so, uh, that got signed into law by the governor, and our administrator gave notice, finally, and we are going to have a new administrator of state elections. Uh, we're also getting new elections board members. We're going to have, uh, we're going to continue to have excellent elections here in Maryland. They are already transparent and accurate, but we're just amping things up a little bit. And a new administrator with more technology skills and understanding and a better ability to collaborate with our local boards of elections, with the legislature, with the governor, lieutenant governor and stuff, is going to be, bode really well for Maryland's elections. Um, I was actually just appointed to a really prestigious, uh, position. Um, the Elections Assistance Commission is a federal, a small federal agency, and there are two state legislators, one Democrat and one Republican. And, uh, I just started as the Democrat nationally, uh, representing on that, and we just had our annual board meeting. I'm really excited to share best practices and learn and tell them what we're doing here in Maryland. I am often described as the Senator for the nonprofit sector. Uh, I did not go to Annapolis today, but a bill I've been working on for too long, uh, was signed into law. In, uh, twenty seventeen, I created NIMBLE, and you guys have heard me talk about this, because it's really important that our nonprofits be aware of this. NIMBLE is an acronym, the Nonprofit Interest-Free Micro-Bridge Loan. And nonprofits that have a grant or a contract from federal, state, county, or municipal government, and there's a long delay, can get up to twenty-five thousand dollars interest-free, low bar to entry, and quick turnaround. And that helps solve the problem of, literally, I had a nonprofit executive tell the story of needing to get a second mortgage on her home in order to make payroll when government funding was too slow to be delivered. That's irresponsible. The other bill that we passed this year related to nonprofits was what I called prompt payment parity. We always look out for our small businesses, as we should, because they help drive our economic engine, but we too often overlook our nonprofits. So last year, we enacted a law that said, "Quick turnaround, and let's pay our small businesses." So we finally got, uh, it had passed the Senate unanimously last year to do the same for nonprofits. We finally, uh, got it enacted into law this year. So there will be prompt payment parity for our nonprofits, uh, which will make a big difference. Consumer protection. It's really hard to pass consumer protection legislation in Annapolis, and it's very frustrating, because the special interests come in with their highly-paid lobbyists, and most lobbyists are great, and whether or not I agree with them, they're thoughtful and prepared, and, and, uh, and they make their case, and that's fine. But consumers don't have the legion of, legions of, of folks who are, who are, who are, um, you know, out there advocating. So every one of you and everyone watching has surely had the experience of driving into a gas station, because the big sign is a great price, and then as soon as you put your credit card or debit card into the machine, the price goes way up. And, uh, and that is compliant with the law. So I keep bringing back, back what I now call gas price gouging, and the Attorney General has called it bait and switch, because you think you're going to pay one price, and it can be five, six, ten, twenty-five cents more per gallon. And as gas prices have gone up, it's just an outrage. So I finally took it to the Montgomery County Council, and ten of our eleven council members co-sponsored it. It passed unanimously. The county executive signed it into law, and we are now working with other counties, and, uh, it is going to be introduced in other jurisdictions, and hopefully, kind of the tipping point in the way that I did when we passed, uh, the styrofoam ban. It started in the counties and in Gaithersburg, uh, and sometimes when there are enough areas where the bill has become law, it's easier to pass it at the statewide level. So that's what I'm hoping on that one, and I'm not going to go deeply on the others. You all know that, uh, three people have died in my district when nine-one-one has failed, uh, including one in Gaithersburg. Uh, I have been working on nine-one-one issues and on next-generation nine-one-one for the past eight years. Um, it was my great honor to be named the National, uh, Nine-One-One Government Leader of the Year, uh, this year at a really nice event on Capitol Hill. Uh, although the commission that I chaired, uh, is, has expired, the need for legislation has not. And this year, we finally passed a swatting bill. Um, swatting is when someone makes a hoax call and says, "There's an active shooter at this school," or "I think my next-door neighbor just murdered his wife," and it's phony baloney. And the police come out, the SWAT teams come out, guns drawn, it endangers people's lives, and it totally wastes our emergency resources. So there wasn't much more than a slap on the wrist, uh, in our law books, and we finally, uh, enacted legislation on that this year. I want to give a shout out to my Senate colleague, Jeff Waldstriker, from the District to the East, uh, for his partnership and leadership on that. Uh, we have had problems with, uh, people jamming our phone lines or, um, or our digital access to nine-one-one, um, and it's an acronym, sorry, T-DOS and D-DOS, Telephonic Denial of Service and the, and the Digital Denial of Service. Uh, we had that bill that did, uh, moved unanimously out of the House, inexplicably didn't move in the Senate. I'm going to keep bringing it back, because it's a problem. It is a threat. And when people can't get through to nine-one-one, people die. Bad guys get away, the house burns down. So we've got to keep working on that. Um, uh, Freedom to Serve is, uh, is what I, uh, is a law that I passed in twenty nineteen. Uh, came back with Delegate David Fraser-Hidalgo in the House in the District, uh, to the West, uh, passed the House, didn't get it through the Senate this year. Um, and that is to allow, and I've worked with Chief Sroka in Gaithersburg, as well as Chief Britto, uh, and Chief Jones, the county chief, um, to allow people who have been honorably discharged from the military, honorably discharged, who have served our country, and if they are interested in serving our community, if they want to serve the city of Gaithersburg, Montgomery County, Metro Police, whatever, uh, but they are not yet citizens, we want to welcome them. They bring ethnic and linguistic diversity. They, they, uh, are also helping us reach, uh, some of the crisis in shortage of public safety officers. So we're going to continue working on that. I also want to give a big shout out to Tom Lonergan Seager, uh, as Senator King did. He's a joy to work with and so responsive, and just, he's, he's wonderful. So thank you for giving us Tom, Lynn Board, Tanisha Brierley, all of you guys, really, you're wonderful partners. Um, MML, Maryland Municipal League, uh, their priorities, their communication. We love working with all of them. I want to just hit a few more. Yeah, it's still a lot, actually. Um, uh, language access. I am very cognizant of the fact that Gaithersburg is the most linguistically diverse city in the country of our size, and Rockville is in the top ten. Uh, as I meet with Cabinet Secretaries, I am always asking about, is that form multilingual? Is that available on your website in multiple languages? And sometimes the, um, when I passed my two-language access laws several years ago, the website might be multilingual, but the form to get a fishing license might not translate. So we're now getting to the point where we're drilling down and making sure that, that, um, that the websites are fully available and the forms are available, and, uh, they are open to that. Um, no one has mentioned four ninety-five and two seventy. New governor, new day. Um, the Transportation Secretary is aware of the challenges, obviously. Secretary Wiedfeld, uh, former head of Metro, um, and, but it's going to start over. I'm really glad that the Hogan plan, uh, was shelved, but we do know that there are transportation challenges. Uh, trans health, health equity is important, and that passed, and as other states are showing their hatred and division and, uh, and everything from "Don't say gay" to "We don't let you pick your gender," or "Identify," um, Maryland is going in the opposite direction and saying, "You need healthcare regardless of your gender. We are going to make sure you get the right healthcare you need." Um, gun safety, again, Delegate Lopez and others have been working on this issue. Today is actually the anniversary of the day. I was one of the lobbyists that helped pass the Brady Bill, the seven-day waiting period, working with Jim and Sarah Brady a hundred years ago, uh, in nineteen ninety-one. And, uh, it, it is tragic every day to watch the news and see another mass shooting, or more suicides, or more attacks. We simply have to do things, uh, do something about gun safety, gun violence. And in Maryland, we're continuing to pass responsible legislation while respecting gun ownership. Um, abortion has already been covered. Cannabis, uh, July first. It is going to be legal. Um, I'm not the biggest fan of cannabis, but the voters voted for it, and the question was the framework, and making sure that there is going to be diversity, equity, and inclusion, figuring out the tax structure, figuring out how to allow the medical marijuana folks to still deal with, you know, cannabis as, as legalized. Uh, I will tell you that I had two amendments on the Senate floor. One was related to municipal and, and, uh, municipal, uh, governments getting a piece of the county's revenues. Uh, the way the original bill came in, it was all going to go to the counties, and the cities were going to have to pay for extra policing, littering, loitering, all that. And it was, the county can give some to the city if it feels like it, which I thought was insane. So made a speech about that. They were not, uh, they did not accept any floor amendments, uh, but that was fixed in the final version of the bill, and municipalities will get, uh, some access to the funding. Um, my other amendment was, uh, driving under the influence of drugs, because in every single state, after legalization, there is a spike in impaired driving, insignificant fatalities and, and serious injuries, and, uh, and it's something that we're going to have to watch. But there is technology. There are oral swabs. I've been working closely for several years with our county police, with our, uh, drug recognition officers, um, who are nationally respected, and, uh, and we are going to need to watch that, because we don't want people to drive stoned and, uh, and kill themselves or others. Um, the last few things, uh, paint stewardship, uh, that Kumar mentioned, um, it has died in the Senate for a number of years, but, uh, I was floor leader this year, and we passed it in the Senate this year, Delegate Barve. What happened was, it did not become law, because the last night, and people may remember this, there were some Republicans, uh, right in the final minutes before adjournment at midnight, who started kind of a, what word do you use?
Curfuffle?
Curfuffle is too kind. Insurrection is a little too strong, but certainly outrageous and disrespectful behavior. And there were a number of bills, including the paint recycling bill, that were behind the, uh, behind the, the curfuffle-ness of it all that died when the Speaker ultimately adjourned, uh, the House of Delegates. So it was close, but this year, it was not our fault. Um, and, uh, two things in closing. Senator Ben Cardin announced that he is retiring after more than fifty years of public service. Uh, that is creating domino effects, uh, as various people are considering running for Senate, and then that creates more dominos and all that. And so, uh, people should make sure that their voter registration is up to date and make sure that they are paying attention, because we have the opportunity to elect, uh, thoughtful, dynamic, uh, new leaders at the federal and dynamic, new leaders at the federal and federal level in the Senate, and then possibly in the House, and then possibly going on from there. And then I want to just close with saying how much I'm going to miss working with Kumar as a member of the House. We've been, we've been friends since the mid-'80s. And he has been so effective and so wonderful, and he has made a big difference for our district. And I will tell you that in the closing days of session, I was able to stop by his committee where there was a tribute to him. And some of the members of his committee gave speeches, as I did. But there were legislators who were crying at the thought of having Kumar leave. And it's because of his leadership and his thoughtfulness and his mentorship. And it was a beautiful, beautiful tribute. He was also recognized with the Casper R. Taylor, my late speaker. He was, he was recognized with the Casper Taylor Award in the final days. And I know you guys get to see some piece of his work, but you should know that statewide, he is, and in Annapolis, he is really deeply loved and respected. So. And with that, happy to take questions. Thank you for letting me cover so much other stuff.
Thank you for sharing, sharing that with us.
Yes.
Cheryl, and for all of the, all of this work in the Downtown Crown and your excellent work on 911, I mean, nationally outstanding. Congratulations on that. I want to open it up to council members, questions, comments? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Senator Kagan, I just want to say thank you on the SWAT-ing bill. That's, that's great work. It's the realm of danger that that enacts when someone, you know, as a joke or makes that phone call.
Yeah.
So, so thank you for that work. That's an important, important bill.
Thank you, thank you. It is done through hatred. It started off as video gamers and playing stupid tricks or, yeah, to get back on someone who killed their little icon or something. And now it can be racist, homophobic. Yeah, it's bad. Thank you. Thank you, council member.
Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to echo my, my thanks on that, too, as somebody whose life was saved by the Montgomery County SWAT team. We need to make sure that they are able to focus on the things that are important. And just seeing what happens when individuals are turning down the wrong driveway these days, God forbid, you know, people end up thinking that there's something really wrong going on. So appreciate your leadership in that space. Obviously, that hits close to my heart. I want to thank you for your leadership on the, just thinking about the linguistic diversity of our communities. And we even had a conversation on one of our outreach efforts and, you know, just the discussion around, it's one thing to make sure that there's translation services so people can listen to what's going on. We still need to make sure they can participate. And I think that often gets left behind. And I think just making sure that the forms, something as simple as that, get translated is important. So thank you on that. Thank you for your support of protecting trans health. That is...
Just so you know, we all, we all supported that. That was not a thing.
Yes, to the legislature and to the governor. I am becoming more and more aware of issues that I was not with family members who have come out as trans. And I'm learning as much as I can and trying to be as supportive as I can. And it's, it's good to know that my family is safe here in Maryland, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate your looking out for municipalities in terms of the logistics surrounding cannabis. As somebody who rides their bike, I get whiffs of people smoking while they're driving all the time.
It's going to get worse.
Yes, and I share your concern about how that's going to impact. We have, we have plenty of issues with pedestrian safety. We don't need more distractions, so I think it's going to be important. So thank you. And I look forward to, I serve on the Senator's Scholarship Committee. I'm in the process of doing that, so.
It's due tomorrow.
I know. I'm working on, I have a conver, I have a question for you after session.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Senator, it's just been a pleasure to work with you all these years on all these great priorities. And you were so comprehensive in your presentation that you preempted, I think, a lot of our questions that we might have asked about some of these issues. But I just want to make a couple observations on, on all your great work on elections and elections reform in particular. You know, I think back to a number of years ago when the mayor and I first joined the city council here. One of the things we discussed was the fact that state election laws primarily govern state and county elections, but municipalities have a lot of sort of home rule flexibility. And that gives us the opportunity to little bit be laboratories for reform. And so we started thinking about ways, small ways, that we could reform election laws in our own municipality because we have the authority to do it and test out ideas like same-day registration and things like that, when perhaps they weren't as mainstream at the state level back then. It makes me think of your analogy to the consumer protection issue with the gasoline signage. If you can't get it passed at the state, you start and you sort of work your way up and you build from the bottom up the support and the experience and the data to show that it's effective, and then you can change minds at the state level. Certainly not suggesting that Gaithersburg in any way changed a lot of minds on election reform. But the point is, after this amount of time and all the work and advocacy you've done, it's nice to see so many reforms are now mainstream and have been implemented at the state level. And I know there's more to come, so I appreciate all of your leadership on the election issue. I want to just also call out and congratulate you on the NIMBLE work.
Thank you.
This is the kind of policy issue that's a bit in the weeds, may not be the most headline-grabbing thing, but means the difference between whether or not our nonprofit partners are able to survive and provide the critical safety net services that we rely on them to provide in our community when there's so much need versus not being able to survive and losing that support. And, you know, it's very innovative. I mean, the idea is not rocket science, but somebody needs to come forward and say, identify the specific issue, here's a way we can fix it, get the fix done, and make sure that we're actually implementing it. And, and you've really been doing a great job on that issue.
Thank you.
And I know, you know, we call you the nonprofit senator, and we work very closely with our nonprofits here in Gaithersburg, providing additional funding and grants to them as well. And so we watch these types of issues very carefully, and we thank you for your good work on that.
Thank you, council member. I'm just going to respond to a couple of quick things. One of the bills you guys might not have heard about, and none of us sponsored it, but it will affect you, which is that municipal campaign reports, finance reports, are now going to be uploaded and shared on the State Board of Elections' website. So for whatever that's worth, that'll be increased transparency, maybe a little bit extra work, but it's also increased transparency. Kumar referenced the one bill he did that unfortunately didn't pass out of the House. It's passed out of the Senate unanimously two years in a row. It's another revolving loan fund, but it is to allow nonprofits to put on green roofs or, or other kind of renewable energy. So solar power, geothermal, wind power, whatever is right for them. And they only have to show up with 10%, and the rest of it will be interest-free to let them participate in our climate solution. So it's a very exciting bill. And Jamie Raskin loved it so much that he took it to the federal level, and it is actually law at the federal level. So hopefully next year, we'll get it through the House as well. And I have one thing at the end. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead.
We just have to say the number's 988 while we're talking about 911. I was teaching at a school, there were over 100 students there in an auditorium, and I asked them, how many of them knew what 988 was? And there was one teacher who tentatively kind of held up her hand, like, kind of maybe. So I just want, in every possible format, and I've talked to some of you about this, I think we were talking about on e-signatures or in, in, on the website for the city, any place we can educate people about this crisis and suicide prevention hotline. Maryland is, is at the, is one of the leaders, and we have a funding source, we're going to need more funding and stuff. But it is anonymous, it is confidential, and it can get you directly to someone who will listen or provide support for you in a tough time. So please make sure that you, anyone who's listening or watching, please spread the word. 988. And you can call 911, but 988 is more direct.
Thank you very much, Senator. Not seeing any others. I just want to open up if there's anybody from the public who wants to make a comment or ask a question. Not seeing in the room, let me just make the same offer to anybody watching on Zoom, just use the Zoom raise hand function. And if so, we will call on you. Going once, going twice, okay. Not seeing any hands go up. Okay.
See you at the book festival.
Yes.
Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that plug. Okay. I want to thank, I want to thank all of you for the work that you did this session and for presentations tonight. We appreciate our part, your partnerships with us very, very much. And with that, I will note that the next regular meeting of the mayor and council is next Monday, which would be May 15, 7:30 p.m. You can participate like tonight, in person or over Zoom. And as Cheryl Kagan just said, don't forget about the book festival, gaithersburgbookfestival.org. It's coming up in 12 days. A little, see the slide we got up there? Hope you all can make it. It's free to attend, free to park. Until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.